Give up that the difference of the current.
Yeah.
Which we should be most.
Very good.
What are the only one that's been for the drive car and they want it. And we're done on, we're done. You should see.
I mean.
You should make a move.
I think so. I like the super guy.
No. So we don't.
Mine's up here.
Yeah, I mean, people should see what a great job it's done. They did. They're really. Our door. I think. They don't just say 21 and they probably put 21. That's. I think they would only. I'll see 21 and 22.
She has to come.
He'll be a lot of him.
Good.
This is my colleagues. And he marthers.
Our director.
Hi, this is. Would you?
Yeah, they catch the patio. I'm seeing why it was the director of the. Yeah. And our in-house.
Because it's money.
Yeah. In-house.
Can everybody take a seat, please?
For all the. Got to be.
Jeff, sit down, please.
All down. Okay, the bringing the meeting back to order here. The March 6, 2025 adjourned special meeting of the Malibu City Council is now called to order. The consent calendar and the disaster rebuild ordinance workshop were considered at the March 4 special meeting. At today's adjourned special meeting, we will be continuing consideration of item 3A on the agenda. Public comments will not be heard this evening. The public hearing for item 3A was opened and closed at the adjourned meeting on March 5. May we have a rule call, please?
Councilmember Conrad.
Here.
Councilmember Silverstein.
Present.
Councilmember Yureen.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Regans.
Here.
Mayor Stewart.
Here.
You have a quorum.
Thank you. All right, we were in the middle of running through the Malibu Municipal Code amendments, and we also had made one pass at the local coastal plan. I'd like to see if the council has a consensus of where we want to start again, and we also have our city attorney who wants to make a comment.
Mr. Feig, just let the council members confirm that they did not take any additional testimony after we adjourned last night until today. Everyone could have just affirmed that for the record.
Do you want to have us go down the line?
Sure.
All right. Haylen?
Confirmed.
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 So I'm going to say I received multiple emails from people that I could tell just from the part that shows that it was about this, and I chose not to open them and didn't read them.
Okay.
I suspect everybody got them.
Okay, but if you didn't read it, you didn't communicate with anyone about it. We're okay.
I never communicated to anybody. Don't know nothing.
Okay. All right, so going back to my original question, do we want to continue on with the Malibu Municipal Code? And by the way, Haylen, we did not do very much after you left. I think we all got tired.
Oh, you saved it for me.
Oh, yeah.
Could we, could we do the one piece of the LCP that we were trying to fix?
Yeah, if that's the case, I think we ought to try and finish the LCP and get that out of the way and then move on to the MMC if that's agreeable to everybody. Is that all right?
I think Tyler has slides that's going to, that are going to show what we, the changes that were made yesterday, and then the proposed language for the LCP along lines, what we discussed.
Cool. All right. Tyler?
All right. Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. Fourth, third night, fourth night for me was that planning commission on Monday, so been getting to know this room very well.
You're sleeping faster. That's good.
I'm like nocturnal at this point. I'm not working in the day, I'm just working at night, you know? All right, so let's get into where we left off yesterday. So I think we all agreed, there was consensus at the council for the primary development pad, and we're going to replace every mention of primary development footprint area with primary development pad in both the LCP and the MMC in the zone text amendment. We're adding the term secondary development pad again in both the LCP and the MMC. We settled on keeping floor area height in bulk and then adding the word substantially to the same location for the CDP exemption for structures destroyed in a natural disaster. And we agreed that to keep the language for, that the coastal commission staff wanted was that if it is, if a de minimis waiver is in the appeal jurisdiction, that it is appealable to the California Coastal Commission. I'd taken a look again today, I think it was a redundant statement because it says at the end, as described below and subjects and see below. So my new comment for you is to just remove below. Is that okay?
That's fine.
Okay.
Tyler, just as you're looking at this, 13.4.11A, we already have a four, so we're going to, this replaces four, and you're going to make the current one that's on our sheet, number five. Is that the idea?
For the, are you talking about for the, I think I'm going to get to that.
De minimis waiver.
So this is 13.4.11A. This is the introduction of that chapter.
Okay, because I was looking at the general requirements for that. I'll defer to, to him. I couldn't find a spot for it with your numbers, but that's okay.
I think since this was the late edition that didn't get in this.
Okay.
Yes, this was after publishing.
I won't worry about the numbering then. Let's just press ahead.
It is 13.4.11A, yes, there. And then this is 13.4.1, or 13.4.11A1.
Oh, okay, A1, all right.
Now we're on A1, yeah.
All right, now I see where it is. Thank you.
So this is another cleanup that I just found while I was writing these slides from last night. It's saying the same thing that we, we all agreed to last night. So if you recall, if you get an onsite wastewater treatment system that meets the minimum standard size for your replacement structure and it's in the primary development pad, it's actually exempt from a CDP. And then we said, well, if you are outside the pad or you have to go greater than something, greater than the standard, then it was covered under a DMW. That's what we all said yesterday. And I realized that the language as written didn't necessarily, there was basically a gap, so you could get something greater than the standard outside the pad, but you couldn't get something greater than the standard inside the pad. We don't think it's going to be a big deal because if coastal commission staff accepted greater than the standard outside the pad, there should be no reason why they wouldn't accept greater than the standard inside the pad as a de minimis waiver. So this is just to make sure there's a catch for that. I promise no more, but it's good we're cleaning it up now. This was the FEMA height situation, so we're scratching this now. We didn't like the height increase beyond 10% in all of this language. We don't like referencing height in the manner it was referenced. And so our city attorney, you know, got his planner cap on and found the words, and I think this does say every, everything it needs to say. Do you want me to read it, Trevor?
Yeah, why don't you read it so we can, because this is going to replace what we have as number four, right?
Right, 13.4.11A4 will now say, increases in the previous finished floor elevation for structures that replaced one that was damaged or destroyed as a result of a natural disaster, where the previous finished floor elevation must be raised to a higher elevation to meet federal emergency management agency FEMA flood zone requirements as determined by the city's flood plan administrator. Such increase shall not exceed the increase in elevation to the finished floor required to meet the minimum FEMA flood zone requirements. The height of the structure from the finished floor to the roof may remain the same as existed for the structure that previously existed, even if the prior structure was nonconforming in height. And then for that, make sure no one gets an extra 10%. No additional height shall be allowed for the replacement structure if it has a nonconforming height. That all works, but got two comments that may require some tweaks still. If it's at the limit, it also shouldn't get, I mean, it shouldn't get any additional height period that takes it over the maximum height. So if you're at 27 and a half feet, you shouldn't get anything above to get you to 28. If you're at 28, you shouldn't be able to go to 29 or whatever. This only deals with nonconforming. Let's read, let me extract out this. Is that somewhere, covered somewhere else?
Well, they get their 10% if they're below.
Yeah, they get their 10% in the exemption category, which would be here. But do they, do they get 10% if the 10% takes them above the statutory limit? No, because that's, that's what we catch. That's what we catch at the very last sentence here. No additional height shall be allowed for the replacement structure if it has a nonconforming height. You're allowed to get your nonconforming height back, you can't go more. Right, but if you had a conforming height that was at the limit, you also shouldn't get any additional height beyond raising your elevation. Okay, so maybe we say no additional height shall be allowed at the replacement structure has a nonconforming height, or the new height would push it to a nonconforming. That's the point. Okay. Let me, let me do that on the fly.
At, at no point shall the height exceed the code allows, something on those.
Unless it's a nonconforming, unless it's a preexisting nonconforming. I, that's, I think this needs a little bit, a little bit of work. The other thing is, is this limited to like for like, or is someone who wants to build a substantially different building going to still get the benefit of this de minimis waiver provision for the height?
No, because if they exceed the 10%, then they're not in the, the natural disaster exemption category.
No, suppose the house was 50% of its TDSF. There is, actually, there is no.
It says the front only for structures that were damaged or destroyed as all of a natural disaster.
I know, but is it limited to how, to structures that were destroyed and which are going to go back like for like? It is because it's, it's, you have to kind of play a little, go back and forth here. So, so, so basically what would happen is you have your CDP exemption that limits you to that 10%, which is this language here. And then you have that DMW which gives you the option to go up, but if you, if, if, if at any point you exceed the 10%, you're exceeding the exemption, thus kicking you into a CDP. So the DMW only applies when it's an exemption in the first place, it doesn't apply to a CDP as well? In this case, the structure gets a exemption, but for that nonconforming condition, you're getting a DMW. Okay. Right? But it would not be a DMW for that piece of the rebuild, even if it's a full CDP rebuild? If it goes beyond 10% in any capacity, it now no longer meets an exemption. So you would, you would, you would get a, you would need a CDP for that. Talk, I know I'm changing the, the example, but talk about like a, the septic, for example. You might not know what they're going to do when they put the septic in after it's been, after a burn, right? You may assume they're going to do a like for like. We, I mean, are people able to piecemeal it like they did after Woolsey? They come in and just get the septic approved and then they do their other plans? So by piecemeal, you mean like the, the septic might come at a later time? I thought people were getting the septic approved through the de minimis waiver when there was yet, no house yet structure. No, 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 no. You have to have a private.
We got confirmation from the coastal commission on that, and we put an end to it, that the idea was that you would get your 10% rebuild, and then because accessory structures, you know, you can increase your, your structure, there's a separate exemption that would allow that under, at Woolsey, they would allow those both to happen at the same time before you constructed it. Since then, and we have the coastal commission interpretation, this, this council made an interpretation as well, you have to actually construct the house under the exemption, and then you would have to come in at a later time to get a separate exemption for an accessory structure or an addition.
So keep, keep in mind, council member, I think the issue with, with some of the Woolsey stuff was allowing the two-step, to be honest with you, because that's what I think the fear is, is that, keep in mind that if there is no two-step, then technically they're limited to the 10%. So there's no, I think what you're saying is they came and they got their PV, they established their principal use of the lot, and then they got a DMW that's going to allow them to get that addition that they may have never had before. That's not established in, in this fire. So that was a, something that was given to Woolsey residents specifically by the council at that time, and that is the mechanism for which they would be able to get something greater than 10%. But in this case, unless it is granted by this council, you will be limited to the 10%, both by the governor's order and by our CDP exemption criteria.
But to go back to Bruce's question about how do you get in this, you've got to, in order to get the de minimis waiver, you have to meet the four test or five test, whatever it is, in order to be operate, be able to operate under the DMW, right?
Sorry about that. I'm sorry.
I was just saying that, going back to Bruce's question about, do you, do you have the ability to play in and out of this arrangement? You have to have, you have to meet the de minimis waiver requirements in order to get a de minimis waiver, which says you have to be a number two, you have to, improvements are consistent with a certified Malibu local coastal program. So.
This is a provision that only, all it provides is a waiver from a CDP, that's it. So if your project is otherwise requiring a CDP, you're not in this because it's just repart, allows the waiver.
So here's the loophole I'm trying to make sure we're not creating. And I don't know the language well enough to know whether we are or we're not, so I trust you. Someone comes in with their PV, which is, it's, it's the same building, plus your, plus up to 10%. They get, they, they then ask for a de minimis waiver for things that if they had to get a CDP for those things, they might not have gotten them. They might be putting the septic somewhere where you wouldn't have allowed them to under a, under a full CDP analysis. They get their de minimis waiver, then they say, okay, never mind, I, I'm, you know, I'm giving up my freebie to build like for like with my new septic that I put where I wouldn't have otherwise been able to put it maybe. I'm now going to ask for a CDP for the, for our house. I want to make sure that we're not creating loopholes where these de minimis waivers can be used for something that's not going to ultimately be a like for like. And we can clean up the language if that's the case. So I think to make it clear for councilmember Silverstein is, Trevor, we put something in there that it's only still limited to floor area height and bulk plus, plus or minus 10%. Because I, I actually agree with that, because in the way it works, you, you know, you wouldn't necessarily, like, the, the reason you apply a DMW to an OWTS, that's a separate structure than the house. You're getting the house under the exemption, 13.4.6, that's the primary structure, and then you get the DMW for the, in this case, you'd be getting a DMW, like, you're using a DMW and an exemption on the same structure. So we just have to close that loop, I think, is what councilmember is saying. So use this hypothetical. Property owner on the beach, house burns, they have a grand plan that they're not going to tell you about to build a, a structure that's substantially different than what was there before, which they're going to have to go through the CDP process to do. They know they're not going to be able to get a CDP for the septic and seawall they want, because if it's not under the governor's order on a like for like, they're going to have all kinds of complications that are going to prevent the city from ever giving it to them, or at least it's going to take a long time where they're going to get it with restrictions that it wouldn't be in the de minimis waiver. So they get the de minimis waiver under, they've, they've given you a, a diagram that shows a, that shows a like for like, you've proved it. They get all their de minimis waivers that they otherwise would never have gotten the whole build, and now they say, forget it, I'm going to build this other property. Thank you for those, I've already put, built my seawall, I've built my septic, I've done all these things I would not have been able to do. You cannot do that because you have to have the principal use of the lot established. You can't have any of these accessory structures without that principal use of the law. It's like, it's like, you know, having your, your granny flat before you have the primary home, it's not allowed by, by the law.
But to go back to your point, you said governor's order, well, the governor's order wouldn't apply because this is for the LCP, the governor's order only applies to the municipal.
So you can't have an OWTS without. Okay. The structure it serves. I'll accept your representation. Thank you.
I just have a question also. What is the plan for tonight? Do we have a, a good, like a stop time? Are we going to just go through this? Do we have?
We cannot, we cannot leave here without finishing.
Perfect, okay, good, because I appreciate what we're doing, as long as we keep the train on the tracks and we have, what is our end time? So we have a goal to work towards.
We have to finish it tonight.
Can we all agree on a time that feels humane for everybody? Is that like 9:30, 10-ish?
I think we go until we get it done.
Okay.
As much as I'd like to go along with what you've got, I'd love to have a deadline.
I just want to make sure that we're all cognizant and aware of time.
We've got to do this right, but we got to get it done.
Great.
All right. By the way, Tyler, did you have a correction you were trying to do to this in response to the councilmember's question?
Yeah, give us a chance to, well, one was possibly adding the floor area height and bulk to the DMW language, right? To, to make sure they can't go beyond 10%. And then two was, was it Mayor Pro Tem that said something about, we said no additional height, something about the no additional height should be allowed for the replacement structure if it has a nonconforming height, and no additional height shall kick someone into a nonconforming height is what you said, right, councilmember? I think I got it.
We just want to make sure that they don't exceed the allowable height of 24 feet for a flat roof and 28 feet for a pitched roof if they're below that currently.
Okay. Well.
So say they were at 27 feet and they want their 10%, that would kick them over. So they can't exceed the allowable height for the zone.
I think that's captured already with the exemption. Yeah. Because you're, you're, you're doing that already, but, okay.
Where do, where do you see that? Because I think that.
This is allowing you, your house is this high to move up like this. You still want that, even if that's over 24 or 28, whatever you have moves up, right?
I don't want any confusion between the FEMA requirement.
Turn your microphone.
I don't want any confusion between the FEMA, that, that's a whole different issue. There's structure height and there's elevation height, and they're two totally different things. So the structure height, if you've got a current home that's say 20 feet, flat roof, and you want to do your 10%, that would allow you to go up to 22 feet. But at no point can you exceed the 24 feet or 28 feet for a pitched roof if you're under that. You don't want your 10% to exceed the allowable height for that. Only nonconforming structures that currently existed beyond that height can't keep that.
Isn't it covered in here? It says such increase shall not exceed the increase in elevation of the finished floor required to meet the minimum FEMA flood zone, so that's the cap.
I think it would be good in there to include that at no point can a.
So I just added.
A nonconforming, can keep their nonconformity, but you can't.
I, I just added at the end, so we have no additional height shall be allowed for replacement structure if it has a nonconforming height, and no additional height can create a nonconforming height.
I, I think that's confusing.
Is that good enough?
Because you're saying, because it would be a nonconforming height for somebody that is nonconforming and they get to go up, it's still not conforming.
You need to have two separate sentences. One that's deals with the nonconformity height, and then one that deals with the homes that are not currently at that height exceeding that possibility.
Yeah, the next sentence should start with nor and then capture the point.
I mean, I, I think it's covered. The, the height of the structure from the finished floor to the roof may remain the same. The, the height of the structure from the finished floor to the roof may remain the same, doesn't say that it may increase beyond that. And it says no additional height shall be allowed if you go, if it, if the replacement structure has a non-conforming height. Oh, why, Tyler, here's simpler, why don't you say if it, if it has a non-conforming height or would create a non-conforming height?
But, but actually, you're, you're not going to restrict someone who's already not non-conforming from having any additional height? If they're at, they're going to be in a peculiar space, Mary Ann gave an example, I think, 27 feet. You can have an extra foot, you can have some additional height, you just can't have 10%. I just, I think that's what it says, everyone, so.
Could you point to exactly where you think that says? I'm not trying to be.
Sure, no, 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 no.
I'm not reading it that way, so I would appreciate some education.
So this is the very last sentence we have, so.
It's the pair, you got to start with the height of the structure from the finished floor to the roof may remain the same as existed for the structure that previously existed, even if the prior height was non-conforming. So it just allows you to keep what you had.
Right.
And then no additional height, so nothing beyond that, shall be allowed for the replacement structure if it has a non-conforming, so, okay, all good.
Right, so you kind of repeated that second sentence from the first one. But I'm not seeing where we're establishing that the current height restrictions are 24 feet for a flat roof and 28 feet for a pitched roof.
You don't have to say that because you're, you're not, you're not saying 24 or 28, you're just saying, that's, that's the, what is implied when you say create a non-conforming height. Because what is conforming is 27 and 28. You see, you see what I mean? So let me read it, and I think using Trevor's context is correct. So the height of the structure from the finished floor to the roof may remain the same, from here to here, as existed for the structure that previously existed, that's a little confusing, even if the prior structure was non-conforming in height. No additional height shall be allowed for the replacement structure if it has a non-conforming height. And no additional height shall incre, shall create a non-conforming height. I think it says everything we wanted to say.
Okay.
Is it, is it not clear? If I, if you want me to put the 27, 28, I can, but.
24, 20.
You see the other word and is what they were saying.
Yeah. Where it says height and.
Yep.
Okay, but let me clean this up because I think this is confusing to you. The height of the structure from the finished floor to the roof may remain the same as existed for the structure, for the prior structure, right? Let me just say that. Even if the, even if the prior structure was not conforming in height, no additional height. Mayor Protem, I just want to make sure it's very clear because if it's not, if we're not in this conversation, 10 years from now, they have to be able to read it.
I'm thinking about the counter text, sitting at the counter, trying to explain this to somebody.
Okay.
And I, I just, I, I would have trouble explaining this to an applicant if they were standing at the counter doing that.
Okay, so the 24 to 28 make it more comfortable? So we see.
I think that from the height of the structure from the finished floor to the roof may remain the same as existed for the prior structure, even if the prior structure was non-conforming in height, period. That's excellent, right there. No additional height shall be allowed for the replacement structure if it has a non-conforming height. So we're not, at that point, we're no longer talking about those non-conforming structures. We're talking about a structure that was below the height requirements. So I think that, take out that non-conforming. No additional height shall be allowed for the replacement structure. Okay.
See, this, this is the problem of doing these things under the Brown Act on an expedited basis, which I understand we're, we're going to do, but just, I've been involved in drafting statutes that have affected substantial things for many, many years. And when we have an issue like this where there's potential ambiguity, such that 10 years from now, somebody will be faced with a problem in trying to understand exactly what this means. We don't just do it on the fly, we spend a lot of time making sure we got the words exactly right.
We are spending a lot of time making sure we're getting the words right, so.
I understand the issue, but we got to get through this.
I would start it, start health this, on that last sentence, where it says, starts with replacement structure. So take out everything, no additional height, so just for, for replacement structures. Yeah.
So no additional height.
Just take that part out. For replacement structures.
Okay.
For the replacement structure, they cannot exceed allowable height.
Okay, I think that's fine too, right? For the replacement structure, or we just say the replacement structure shall not exceed allowable height, is that okay?
What does everybody think about that?
That's fine. But just out of curiosity, didn't we just counteract, counter dick where we just said?
No, because one's dealing with non-conformity and one's.
I think it was.
I think, yeah, I think you want to have this, something in there to say.
How about for conforming structures, for replacement of conforming structures, they may not exceed allowable height?
Let me go back to what we had, because there's two separate issues here. We have, if you're already non-conforming, you're allowed to get that back to where it was. And then if you're not non-conforming, if you are conforming, you're allowed to go up to the limit that would make you not, you know, to the point that you are not conforming.
The allowable.
You wouldn't need, you wouldn't need this if you're under the height because you can go up by right, so if you're.
By 10%.
Yeah.
All right, then just take off, take off from that where your cursor is down. So from no additional height shall be allowed, just take out that whole sentence though.
That sentence until the port, until the end, as you said before, I think, Mary Ann, is perfect. It captures the right idea for the non-conforming property. Where we're getting hung up, and we still don't have the right words for, is a prior conforming property, which if it gets any or all of the 10%, it will end up exceeding the height limit. That's what we're trying to draft for. Okay, let's just make it very clear then, conforming structure shall not be granted.
I mean, it says the height of the structure from the finished floor to the roof may remain the same as existed.
10%.
For the prior structure, that would cover a conforming one that moves into non-conforming.
Let's see what he's talking about here.
There you go. Okay, so we have no additional height, this is for structures that are already non-conforming that have to move up their base elevation. No additional height shall be allowed for the replacement structure if it has a non-conforming height, right? Do we agree that?
We already dealt with that in the sentence prior to that.
No.
No, 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 I don't think it does.
The height of the structure from the finished floor to the roof may remain the same as existed for the prior structure, even if the prior structure was non-conforming in height.
Oh, okay. Yeah, but that sentence doesn't stop you from getting the additional height, the next sentence is what's required. So you want to just delete this?
That sentence is good. How are we thinking they get additional height? What, what's the concern? This doesn't authorize anyone to get additional height, this only allows you to get the height that you had before. And then if somebody, the only way to get 10% is if you're going to put it up and it's, and FEMA is going to keep it under.
It reads fine.
Okay, yeah, that one's fine.
It reads fine, I mean, the planning director and your principal planner can, can interpret this very, very clean. Let me try something, sure. I think the sentence that you have in gray right now is perfect. Yeah. Because that deals with the non-conforming. What you want to say is something to the effect of additionally, where the destroyed structure was under the height limit, it shall get only such additional height as does not take it over the height limit. Words to that effect, that's.
No, that's contradicting the 10%.
But that's the point we're trying to capture. Does my last sentence not say that? A conforming structure shall not be granted an additional 10% in height increase if it creates a non-conforming height? I read it when it says shall not be granted an additional 10% to mean it shall not be granted any portion of it, which actually is not what we're trying to accomplish. Because again, if you're at 27 feet, you can have another foot, it's not 10%, but it's 5% or 4%. So the point we want to make is the limit to your addition, within the 10%, your limit is the law.
Shall not be granted greater than 24 feet for a flat roof or 24, 28 for pitched.
If I may, I, I know that we're, we're, we're stuck on this and we understand the council's intent, which is really the piece that we need the most. And, and our, our staff is here making sure that they can interpret it, which they both have confirmed, we understand that. So from the city attorney's perspective, I would ask you, Trevor, legally, to make sure that we're meeting what the council's direction is. And then we can obviously understand the intent and move this forward.
I'm sure I understand the intent is that if, if you have a 20-foot home from the bottom to the top of the roof, you can keep that, FEMA says you go up by 10 feet, you keep that 20 feet no matter what, right? Whether you are under or over, you can have that amount, right? That's what we want to be able to do.
Structural height.
Yes. And in order for someone to be able to get any additional height of the structure beyond what existed before, they have to be underneath the 28-foot pitch or the 24-foot flat, that's what we're saying, right?
Yes.
You don't need to have an authorization to move that because beachfront can already go up to 24 and 28 by right. They just wouldn't use this proportion, there's nothing in here that would, what, what is in here that would authorize someone to increase it beyond that?
I don't read it that way either, and to your point, I don't think you need to reiterate what is conforming, what is not conforming, that's established in a separate area of the code.
If, if the council is concerned, and just to be frank, and wanting the, the, our counterstaff and our counterstaff can interpret the code very well. But if it's about the general public understanding the code, I mean, the code for the most part to the general public is word salad. And so we'll make sure that the intent, as far as the explanation, and should council move forward with these amendments, that it is understood from that general language for the public in any materials that are provided.
All right, I think you've got an excellent point, but the issue we've got right now is we need to get a consensus, or a straw vote, that this is acceptable language so we can move on.
I'm happy with this.
I am too.
Okay.
Is everybody happy with it? Bruce?
As long as staff can explain it to the appropriate parties, I'm good with it, thank you.
I'm going to abstain from this one.
Okay, we've got a majority for this one, we'll move on. What was the next one we had that came up?
Okay, so we talked about this yesterday, this is, I think Commissioner, our council member Silverstein wanted not in substantially the, the same location instead of the term outside, which I had before, is that okay now?
Where, where, where are you at on that?
13.4.11A5.
Okay, on five, okay. Bruce, you okay with that?
Yes. Yes.
Okay, do we have a straw vote on that favorable?
Good for me.
Good for me? All right, that's approved, let's keep going.
Okay, so 13.4.11A6, we wanted to add or recommended by the applicable federal state for the water tanks.
Yes.
Good?
Good.
Okay. In 13.4.11B5, we are removing this finding because we no longer need it for the other language. And then we're going to move 13.4.1B6 to B5 because B5 is no longer, this B5 will no longer be there.
Okay, everybody all right with that?
Yes.
All right, keep going.
13.4.11C2, this is just additional language in the reporting portion of the de minimis waiver that says this is what the coastal commission staff wanted, I think we agreed on this, there was no change.
Okay. All right.
Okay. We upped the temporary home, now we're in the MMC, so we're all good on the LCP?
All right, are we, do we need to make a vote on the?
It's all in the same ordinance, so just go to the end.
I, I think we can say we have the LCP done.
Can I ask one quick question?
Yeah.
On that appeal directly to the coastal commission provision, it's my understanding that you can't appeal a denial of anything to the coastal commission ordinarily. Are we creating a right to appeal a denial of a, of a de minimis waiver with that? It just says decision, so I, I. But, but if the decision is no, you ordinarily can't get to coastal, are we creating a right to go to coastal if it's a no? Let me double check.
I don't believe we, we, we are, but I will double check that, it's a good point.
Why don't we just say an approval instead of a decision?
Yeah.
Yeah, can we just change that word, I think that's an excellent point, Bruce.
Let's just take. You can keep going through the municipal code, well, well.
Okay, all right, where we finished off last night in our fog, and I'd like to come back to it, is 17.53090. This is landscape water conservation fire protection. I'd like to just make sure it's on municipal code.
So Mayor, if you want to do that, we can go back to landscaping, we have our building official here, I think there was some clarification on.
Go ahead.
And temporary housing, yeah.
She slipped in on me, I did not see her arrive. You want to go ahead, I think this is, was it number K and I in 17.40040?
Yeah, I understand you have some questions, so I'm here to answer those questions.
Well, I have it down, we deferred it till tomorrow, which is.
I believe the question we had was, the temporary structures, there's a, was a clause, and I can't remember which one it was. It said there would be some, a professional who would go out and take a look at the site, I'm using my own words, to make sure there was no problem if there was a rain or something that would move that, that structure, I mean.
And, and also council member, you're in, in section or clause K here on this page, there was questions about the type of foundation for temporary housing. And it's, and the references for chapter 16 and 18, and just if that could be expanded on.
Yeah, let's take that one first and we'll work back up.
So starting with the language of this, the sitting of the temporary housing shall be supported by a limited geotechnical report prepared by appropriate licensed professional. I believe that was the first question. Let me read to you what a definition of a limited geotechnical report is. It's a desktop research study, it doesn't involve any boring of, of, of the parcel. It's collecting and analyzing the information and data that is already existing. So the language on this part of the order of the amendments farther stage, which needs to be evaluated, the location of the prospect temporary housing with respect to geologic and flat hazard that is specific locations may be exposed during the four years of use of this location. The mapping in front of you is a map of post-fire debris flow, flow and flood from the USGS. Just giving you an example of what we're going to be looking for. Usually after a fire, this type of maps are, are prepared by the USGS and give us the impacts of a possible flood and muds of debris after a fire. So we are asking the appropriate licensed professionals, could be a geotechnical engineer, a civil engineer, engineer geologist, a professional geologist, to go over the data that is already existing and analyze where the location of the parcel is. The next slide also provides you with the watershed emergency response assessment. This is also technical information and data that is found on the California Conservation, like I'm showing and displaying here for you. Our data for the Palisades Fire is already part of a watershed hazards assessments, which we're asking those licensed professionals to review when they are recommending a home be located at the parcel. Next slide. Moreover, it will show a complete evaluation of the site. Again, I'm showing you the resources on how to get to it. One more slide. And then finally, the type of information that this evaluations are providing. And I just made. I just made an example, just in a specific parcel, Las Flores. It stays when you go through the evaluation report, put the address of the property. It shows, and I have highlighted this for you, do not use any temporary housing because it is on the flood path and possibly mud debris. So that is that recommendations for adding this item on the amendments. So we have, our families need to be safe and somebody needs to do this analysis. We're not asking for a complete geotechnical report. This is just for, as I mentioned, limited report, which is described as a desktop research in gathering of data and visiting the site to make sure that our families are not left on the path of the mud debris and we don't expose them to any fatalities.
Mary Ann, do you have a question? Well, I've got a quick one. The part that's in red at the bottom, is this generated automatically by the system?
Yes, it is.
Okay. And we originally had in here, then we were questioning last night, the last sentence says this report must be submitted to the city for its review and accepted by the building official. Is this a, can this something be self-certified or does it need to have a building official?
This needs to have the, a registered engineer looked at it. This is a critical data. We want to make sure that when we issue a permit for a temporary housing, that we are due, our due diligence for safety. This is not a self-certification and which people might put their run address, their run latitude. I just want to make sure that we're taking the time to make sure our families are safe with a temporary housing.
Okay. All right. So the question last night was, do we leave in the last sentence? That was one part of it. And also how detailed this is going to be. Does anybody have any questions or?
I think we leave the last sentence.
I'm in favor of leaving the last sentence in as well.
The only question I have is, would this be required for a RV or a travel trailer that's on, registered for travel on the highway?
If the temporary housing, temporary housing for us and under our municipal code could be a mobile RV or a manufactured home, it is going to be required. This is just possibly a one-page or two-page document of a licensed professionals that does that thorough investigation of not putting the families on harm ways.
So I'm making motion we approve the last sentence.
Yeah. We leave it as submitted, originally submitted. Haylen, Bruce, Mary Ann, your thoughts?
My only concern was if it's going to be professionally or pro-certified, but I'm hearing that it's going to go through the city of Malibu.
It's not so much about the permitting, it's about having our quality control in our eyes to make sure that our families are safe.
Yeah.
That's the main intent of that.
Leaving it then. Thank you.
Helen, you okay with it?
Yes, leaving it.
Mary Ann?
No, I haven't said anything yet. I would think this stuff is science, pretty much. I mean, are you going to, do you contemplate that you're going to be in a position where somebody submits this report by a certified licensed professional and you're going to have a different view that it's not safe after they have certified that it is?
It's quality control. That is my job.
I understand that, but I'm asking, is it, I mean, it's your job unless we don't require it to be your job.
It is my job as your building official for when we issue a permit. Chapter one of the building code, section 108, established that the building official has the authority of giving the temporary uses and building permits for temporary structures. So I'm just going by what my responsibilities as your building official and my recommendations to you.
I, hypothetically, we could have an ordinance, could have a whole bunch of ordinances that say this kind of analysis bypasses the building official. And all that is required is this stamped certified report from a professional. Are you saying that that would be an illegal provision in the code?
Yeah, you would be going against the adopted codes that you adopt. It's part of the California Building Code, again, chapter one, section 108, given the authority of the building official. I could ask our city attorney to see if we can provide you more information on that.
Yeah, I was going to ask that question too, because, you know, Yolanda may be completely right about this. What I'm hearing is that the state building code, which we have to follow and we adopted, prohibits essentially self-certification, although I think it's being done in other places. So are those illegal provisions in other places? Were they allowing self-certification?
And just to clarify on this, Councilmember Silverstein, we are talking about section 108. We talked about temporary housing and temporary permits, and that is under the authority of the building official. And that's a section of the code that I'm citing to you, 108. I'm not talking about self-certification. That is not what the discussion was, unless you can clarify your question.
Just, I thought we did self-certification last night. We decided we didn't have enough information about how we're supposed to do that. Come back at a later time if we want to do that, but we don't have the details of what a self-certification program we have to have.
That is, that is correct, Councilmember Earring. And I understand Counselor Silverstein's point, but our, the California Building Code does require the sign-off, so even in those areas, and we need to, we need to flesh out what self-certification would look like in Malibu, which would be a completely separate discussion. But you would still want our building official to receive and certify anything that would be being built in Malibu. But we would need to, we would need to look more closely as to what that would, would be.
I thought we were going to do that in a workshop or upcoming talk.
Self-certification is going to be a separate program, separate review.
I'm okay with this.
All right. I think, Mary Ann?
Yes.
All right. So this is okay on J. Then we want to talk about a question we had on K. K was about foundation, if I remember correctly. So the question was, what constitutes, it's one thing to pull an RV up on wheels and put some straps on it and hold it in place, but the question was last night, if people are putting foundations on a temporary location, aren't they making it into a permanent residence or ADU?
I think the question was, what are the requirements for the foundations noted in chapter 16 and 18, right?
Right.
That's what we're trying to, we, I think Mary Ann was looking for some explanation of what the heck that was.
Yeah. And so chapter 16 of the California Building Code, building code that the city council has adopted, chapter 16 talks about structural design. Chapter 18 concentrated on soils and foundations. Appendix G talks about flood-resistant construction. And so just going back to Woolsey Fire, and this is not something new that is being added to, to the building code. Under the Woolsey Fire, and I was able to get some metrics. We had 59 permits submitted for a Woolsey Fire. 12 of them, we have a manufactured home with the foundation system. The rest of them were RV trailers and temporary housing that use wheels. So for those 19 projects that we saw that we, they had a manufactured home being installed as temporary use, we were able to do actually a review, and I will show you the three different examples of foundation systems that follow under this. The first one, Fillory Heights. And I'm just going to go rapidly through the slides, but the first one, it shows, it went through all of the reviews. You see the stamps for all of the design professionals. Next slide. Again, it's, I'm just showing you all of the documents that were submitted. Another one. Until you get to the foundation. It shows details on how the manufactured home was put in place. It shows a foundation plan. Moreover, shows how the installers were going to install this pre-manufactured system. More details, more details on that roof, more details for the trusses. And then, one more. We got a, the engineer in charge of this project for a temporary house, you can see on the, on the legend, it shows temporary house, minimum foundation requirements. So we're not talking about a major foundation, but something that is tied in into the ground in case we have a shaking, we have the ability of those families to get out. It's not with intent of the purpose of withstanding a big earthquake and not suffer any cracks or not falling down, but it's to give the ability to the families to exit the structure. So the requirements for the foundation systems, the minimum items are depicted on chapter 16, chapter 18, and appendix G. And so that is just one of the examples. I bring to you two more examples and we can go rapidly over that. This example, just go if you can find a foundation.
Before you get to that one, just out of curiosity, that looks like a permanent structure being built. Why wouldn't we just call it what it is? It's going to be an ADU.
And so that is, a manufactured home was allowed, and it's also allowed under this code. It wasn't something that, it was prohibited not to allow a manufactured home. The foundation systems are not completely concrete or caissons. It was tied downs into the ground. But that was, it is allowed for temporary housing. If you'd like to change that.
Well, no, I'm just asking a question. It looks like it's, it's very permanent.
Yeah, and that's what, we have three parcels that after the house was completed, and now they're in their court enforcement, and the property owners either are submitting a, an application for an ADU or are going through the prosecutor's office.
Okay.
So these are temporary foundations, though?
Temporary foundations.
What would an actual permanent foundation, if they did want to convert it to an ADU, how different would it be?
It would be, first of all, we would need a complete geotechnical report. The geotechnical report, we investigate all the geo-hazardous challenges that the site has and then possibly caissons, depends on where it's located at. So you're talking about concrete, steel, and it could be, it is just dictated by the site conditions and the geo-hazardous site that the geotechnical engineer and the structure engineer designed the foundation systems.
So the temporary home structure would not be an acceptable foundation?
No.
They do have to convert it to a different type of foundation system in order to keep it for a permanent?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, that was, that was probably my question.
Yes, yeah. So and I'm showing you this data-proof foundation system. Pretty much you have your seismic ties tied in, so this is not a permanent foundation. It's a temporary foundation system, but it follows the minimum code requirements.
In listening to this conversation, something that occurred to me that hadn't, we've been talking a lot about the FEMA floodplain with respect to height. Are properties on the beach going to be allowed to have a temporary house, given that it would have to sit above the floodplain? I mean, would it, is it going to have to sit above the floodplain?
And that's why we are requiring this geotechnical report and for flood hazardous conditions.
Does that mean it's a practical matter, they're not going to be able to have them?
Possibly, it's going to be difficult to, yeah.
I mean, just because we're offering a temporary housing item doesn't mean everybody's going to be able to take part in it. But if they do take part, then these are the rules.
No, I understand that. I just think a lot of people on the beach are thinking that they're going to have that temporary house if they can figure out a way to fit it. And it sounds to me that there's not going to be a way to do it safely.
From the beginning, that's, I was, there's just no way for some of those lots to do it. There's a lot of gifts that's been given that don't apply to many of the parcels.
Yeah, that needs to be most, not just some.
I would say that they're.
Say what?
I, I'm not comfortable with the word gift.
Oh, okay.
These people have been through hell, so.
This is true.
It's not.
Not a gift from the government to, you know, bypass some things.
All right. So if we're comfortable with this section, everybody okay with?
I've got the answers that I was looking for. I appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Anybody else okay?
Good.
This is okay? We do need to come back to I. Did we define, did we finish I in this section?
Mr. Mayor, we did have an adjustment we can put back on. I thought Councilperson Silverstein raised a good point and checked the LIP. Most of the references to appeals to the coastal commission reference CDPs. So to make it clear, we borrowed language. Tyler's going to throw it up here to just make it clear that the de minimis waiver is only appealable under the circumstances that, for the types of development that a CDP would be appealable. This is not it.
That's not what we have here.
Yeah. Tyler, do you have the?
I just realized Parker's not here, so. Oh. Can you?
Parker, just getting comfortable. Well, why, he's getting that up. Do we want to talk about? Oh, here it is. He's got it right here.
We got it right here. So at the end of, what was it, Trevor? 13.4.11C? All right, was it C or was it D?
It's C2.
C2.
Reporting a de minimis waiver, section two talks about the, right? This is the very last sentence. This is the part that adds the appeal right. And so, and then if you can put up the definition of appealable coastal development permit, it'll show the four types.
Yeah.
But I think before you leave this page, the question that we, that Bruce brought up and I agree with, it says the planning director's decision, but you could have a negative decision.
Yeah, that's what the.
You're going to see.
You're going to see.
The four types, there's, there are only an approval in these three areas or a public works project. So denials are not one of the four types.
Yeah, here. Developments approved by the city, developments approved by the city, developments approved by the city, and then any development which constitutes major public works project. So Trevor's just saying that, you know, only if it's in one of these categories, which would be technically a city approval, shall it be appealable.
Okay.
Does that work for everybody?
Okay. We got a sure?
Yes.
Yes.
I suppose no objection. Ready to the list of approvals.
Keep it going.
Okay, let's get back to I for a second. You have the language on that? This is.
Give me one sec. We're in the MMC now, right? So we got through, we upped the fine to 1,000, and this isn't the right language, shall obtain. This is supposed to be 48-hour verification, Trevor, right?
Say that again, Tyler.
There was a typo here. It said, shall obtain 48. Let me see. Yeah, let's just move on to that, but I want to come back to the, but the premise of this, the only change is G already existed, but you upped the fine from 500 to 1,000 if you don't have a verification, or if the verification is not obtained for removal. So we did that yesterday, but I'll clean up that language and come back to.
So obtain verification within 48 hours is what you meant, right?
Yes. I just, I don't want to change any language that's existing because G is an existing language, so I have to come back to that. Give me one sec. So now, yeah, we're on I, and we changed this yesterday. So temporary housing structure shall be occupied only by the property owners or tenants living on the property the date of the natural disaster or their families. All the red is what we added yesterday. Should this requirement be violated, the temporary housing structures must be immediately removed. The property will no longer be eligible to place a temporary housing structure on the property for a period of five years, and the owner shall be subject to a fine of $1,000 per day. Let me add a comma to be consistent with the other one. Let me add a comma to be consistent with the other one. And then we have the lean's language that we had before.
$1,000 a day for what period of time? Is that for when they were violating it already, or is it until they remove it, or is it something else? I don't know what that is referring to.
It would be while in violation.
Yeah, as long as the violation exists, you could be charged $1,000 per day. We had to have the evidence to show.
So, if you find out they were doing it for the past six months, all of a sudden they get a fine for $1,000?
I think we'd have to provide notice. We wouldn't, as soon as the violation is, is provided evidence to the city, then we would start the violations. That's our standard practice not to go back.
I think you get messy if you go retroactive. There's all sorts of things.
Yeah.
I'm not advocating you do, I'm just saying that this language...
So then put it per day until the violation is completed.
This is how we standardly list the fines. I think it's fine, we just applied it to our normal practice. It makes them subject to it. I think if you start adding constraints on it, it could create issues for you.
Do I get a sure out of this?
I'll give you an oh well on this one.
Sure.
Sure.
Is this enforceable?
Yeah, how are we gonna, we get a complaint, and then the enforcement guy comes out, and then, or lady, and then?
This is what we died with. So, that's $1,000 a fine is allowed under the government code, so that won't be an issue. In terms of removing something from someone's property, we had talked about including a condition on people's permit to obtain their temporary housing that would grant the city the right to enter and to remove it at their own cost. We're gonna put that in as a condition. There's always some risk when you're going on someone's property to take things off, but that would give us, you know, rights to go and do so.
Okay. I have a, oh, well, sure.
I'm in.
I got an I in, I'm in. I'm in. Mary Ann?
As long as it's enforceable.
Okay. That's a new addition to our list. We're moving on.
Enforce, enforce, enforce.
Okay. I did not have anything until we got back to landscaping. Is that everybody else?
That's who we ended up last night.
Yeah. All right, let's start again at the top of the page, 'cause that's when we started getting...
Real quick, for the record, Mayor, there was like a, because the page number was 48, it got carried over into G, so just to be clear, there's no 48 in G.
Okay. I didn't see it, and you're right.
It was in my presentation, so I apologize for that.
All right.
So, we're on J, or you guys are comfortable with J as was, right?
Yes.
Okay, and then K, as was, with the planning commission language in blue.
That's correct.
Okay. And now we're on to landscaping?
Right.
Okay, so yesterday, we, we added that eucalyptus trees are in A, as now prohibited. We got rid of turf grass being allowed in Zone Zero, and then because eucalyptus are just prohibited, we got rid of them in being allowed after 50 feet. And then we kept the existing language, 'cause this language really means that existing eucalyptuses with that monarch butterfly habitat would be allowed potentially, and then no, no need to reference within 50 feet anymore. And then we did like the fire department's canopy language. That's basically where we left off with landscaping, so let me go back to where we were in the text.
H was the next item up.
H.
If we're in agreement with what we've seen so far for A through F. Are people comfortable with A through?
The H is given to us by the fire department, right?
Right.
H, H was, it wasn't that it was given to us, so it was originally proposed by staff with low-growing and succulents and perennials. The fire department said that's not a requirement, and thus must, might be pushing the limit if, if someone, they would basically prohibit certain people from having trees on their property.
Right.
So, we're comfortable with H with the red, with the red, not the purple? Is that current currents?
It's what I am, yeah.
I'm comfortable with purple.
Me too.
You wanna leave the purple in?
I like staff's recommendation, and I don't care if it's more than the fire department requires, if it's what they think is required, if it's what they think is safe, I don't know why we would be making it less safe than what the staff's recommending.
Who took it out?
I, I do wanna say I'm not the fire expert, so.
Well, we talked about this last night, it seemed to be, I would say, it didn't seem to be as important to the fire department, it seemed like. It was just to let them put trees in if they wanted to, but they have to manage the trees that we have up here, higher up. Is that correct?
You're right. If I remember the conversation last night, there's a world of things between a tree and low, and low-growing plants, and I thought, Doug, actually, you were concerned about certain of those things.
Right, I am, but I also look at the standpoint of being practical about this, so.
And Mayor Counsel, if I may, and Mayor Protemerkins, you did have some comments about potential fruit trees and not wanting to restrict residents, and I do have a note here that to add language potentially to encompass that of as allowed by this chapter.
Well, I think my only comment would be is, would we need to say only efficiently irrigated plants and trees shall be allowed between 5 feet and 30? Or if we just say plants, is that cast a wide enough net that if they had fruit trees, that would be considered?
Yeah, we could even go to Alexis's point, only efficiently irrigated plants and trees that are allowed in the chapter.
That work for everybody?
Yeah, of course. You say plants and trees, right?
Plants and trees allowed in the chapter, right?
All right.
And they wouldn't be able to do pines, palms, eucalyptus, pine, cypress, cedar, ficus, or tree of heaven? 'Cause those are specifically prohibited within 50 feet of destruction, or prohibited altogether.
Correct.
No objection? All right, let's move on to the next page. This is I.
Right, so irrigation, we're requiring it now for all planting areas between 5 and 100 feet, and then if you're in a geological hazard area, you have to show that it's not going to become a problem by putting water into the slope. There's some language here regarding Statement 111, city shall review analyses and findings provided by the geotechnical consultant, and determine whether irrigation is allowed in geologic hazard areas. So, similar to the fire, the temporary home type of review, there's just a minor check to make sure that we're not doing it wrong by putting water in the slope.
Okay, I'm fine with the part in red, but I'm seeing this part in purple, it looks like it's redundant. 'Cause it looks like it says at the start, we're gonna, irrigation shall be required and maintained, and we say at the bottom, all vegetation, the structure shall be maintained, sufficient moisture.
Yeah, that's true. This was added by the fire department, but I think you are right, it's kinda saying the same thing.
Is there a negative implication here that if you're not allowed to irrigate, you can't have vegetation?
That's not written here. No, it just says that you, you may not be allowed to irrigate, you may not be required to install irrigation.
I mean, they can still have a hose bib attached to the hose, and have a hose, and hand-water things, or set up some type of...
But I, I thought that the regime that we're establishing for fire hardening is that in the area within 50 feet of the house, you can only have efficiently irrigated plants and trees, and you're gonna be required to install and maintain your irrigation, but you're not allowed to have irrigation in certain places. To me, that would mean you should also have a provision saying, if you're not allowed to have irrigation, you're not allowed to have plants and trees.
Well, you could put succulents and things like that in that don't take a lot of water. You could hand-water them.
Then you're getting into the weeds, no pun intended, but with potted plants?
Yeah.
I don't know. I heard a lot of people had potted plants that survived.
I'm just saying, the way this is worded right now is creating a situation where in the properties that can't have irrigation, we're allowing them to have non-irrigated plants and trees within 50 feet of the property.
Well, yeah, you may not just be allowed to have plants within 30 feet of your structure in that case, because if you, if you, you know, if you can't have irrigation, then you can't efficiently irrigate, right? And so, within 30 feet of your home, you just wouldn't have plants.
Well, I mean, they can have, there are a variety of different ways to irrigate.
Oh, fair.
Drip irrigation, there are several ways that they can satisfy protection of the geological hazard zone and still be able to efficiently water and maintain ground cover or other plants in a responsible manner.
And I think that's right. Now, I understand why I got the purple in there. I see, I see how that works out, 'cause if we don't let you have a rain bird, you still gotta have enough irrigation to keep the plants moist.
Right. My biggest concern with this is just making sure that we have, that we require some type of shut-off system, so in the event that there's damage to the irrigation system, that we don't have a flood condition, because I think that's something that we've repeatedly seen in these fires, where the irrigation melts or becomes compromised, and then it's just free-flowing water out there. So, whether there's a shut-off system on the irrigation required, or if we also do something at the water main, so that we're able to shut off the water, so that we, if the house is lost, that there's some way of controlling that.
Is there something in the building code or requirement for some kind? I know in my house, I have a shut-off valve for the irrigation, but it's not automatic.
There's a lot of companies now that are doing it, I just learnt about them.
Yeah, I mean, Home Depot has several products that you can attach to, I mean, and you can also do it to detect leaks inside your house and things like that, and remotely shut them off.
What's to stop somebody from building their house and satisfying these codes, and then not planting and putting it all in after, and then a fire happens, and, you know, I think that the shut-off valve is a great idea to require.
And you're right, people can change, come back and do it after the inspectors got.
Right.
Yeah, that's a code issue, enforcement issue, though, but that's, that's for all types of structures. We can't, we can't, yeah.
So, can we add language within this to require some type of shut-off system?
So, at the end, we just add a sentence that irrigation systems, did you say automatic, or no, does that not matter?
A shut-off system.
So, irrigation systems must have a shut-off valve. Is that good enough?
That sounds good to me.
What's everybody think?
I have it at home.
Well, it'd be nice to have something that was automatic, but you know, you think about it, if you're talking free flow, as soon as your sprinklers go off, that's a free flow. So, how would it know that was different than a pipe being broken?
I agree, this is not just a simple thing, but there are systems out there that exist to be able to achieve this goal. So, I mean, is this something that maybe we should, when we're going into the home hardening discussion, we bring that back and add it at that time, when we'd had a little bit more time to do some research on what products exist and things like that?
Yes. And we'll have fire professionals there, and landscape professionals. I think this is out of our lane in some ways. We do that, and then we get the information.
This would be comparable to a gas shut-off valve, which is placed on all homes. It initially started city by city, and then it became statewide initiative, so, oh, again.
Yeah, I'm fine with this section, provided that we put that on our list of home hardening requirements.
So, don't add the valve language now, just kinda table it until we...
That's, that's acceptable.
Yeah, until we know...
As long as we have that on our, and I trust that staff will make sure that we come back with that.
Noted.
All right. Everybody okay with this?
Yep.
All right. J, I would think that's pretty self-explanatory, you okay with that?
Yeah, did you guys, so, we originally said only native plants within 30 feet, but it sounds like, you know, again, we didn't wanna be overly restrictive if it wasn't necessary. 'Cause I think I heard from the chief that some non-natives might be good, you know, fire prevention thing, you can add it.
As long as they're not invasive.
'Cause we're thinking, we're talking Malibu language, right? He was talking just in general.
Yeah, we're talking about the one, retaining invasive plants, is that what we're talking about?
Yeah. Well, we have the J that we cut before, or that was after, a cut after the planning commission meeting, the first J, which was only native plants to the Santa Monica Mountains can be planted within 30 feet of the structure, or beyond 30 feet of the structure, I'm sorry. And the reason we cut that is because we, you know, we cut the low lying in the first one.
Yeah. Okay, so, the new J is the one we're approving.
Yeah, so you wanna cut the, cut the J, and then approve the new J.
Okay. Everybody all right?
Yeah.
All right. No objection? Keep moving on, two?
Two, we just added that, the staff added that non-continuous mold areas shall be separated with non-flammable materials such as gravel, rock, decomposed granite, or stone. Fire department had no issue with that, they just wanted to add the end, which is organic mold shall be maintained with at least a three-inch depth, but not, but must not exceed six inches in depth.
Anybody have any, any negative comments to that?
Once the fire department says good, I'm good.
I'm good. We're good with that?
Same.
Moving along. We're now, that takes care of the plants. Let's go to 17.6.
I wanted to mention milkweed is great for monarchs, and also non-invasive, so, if we're taking out eucalyptus, we could put in milkweed.
All right, over to 17.6.
So, 1760 is the non-conforming uses, and this is a big chapter for the whole process, because this is what establishes your planning verification, and what allows you to get your non-conformities back that you had lost. So, first, we have the major chapter, so what we did was, we had F here, this was created in 2019 following the Woolsey fire, and that gave the PV plus 10% only to Woolsey. We cut that and mimicked a lot of this language back in C. C originally existed before Woolsey, and that means you can get a planning verification for a rebuild, full stop, no 10%. Now, you can do a rebuild plus 10% for all natural disasters. We could just copy the language they had in Woolsey. I wanna point out a couple key things here. So, one, this language uses square footage height or bulk, where if you recall, the LCP exemption language uses floor area height and bulk. It's a distinction, because square footage, for TDSF, we count the exterior wall, from exterior wall to exterior wall. A floor area is a count from the internal wall to internal wall, so there's a little bit missing there. So, we're getting into some very high, dense weeds here, but essentially, to meet your CDP exemption, you would have to meet the floor area criteria, but for a PV, you're allowed to get back your 10% with the thickness of your wall.
Just out of curiosity, which number is supposed to be used like on tax collector, tax assessors? Because that's one of the things you're gonna be using if you have to define...
I've actually heard mixed things, believe it or not. I think it's long understood, or long perceived, that tax assessor meant internal floor area. I've talked to the tax assessor a couple times during Woolsey, and the, the person I talked to said that for the two instances I looked at, those were accounting exterior walls. So, I think there's a misnomer, or maybe it's inconsistent how it was done. I think the general, the general perspective was that it's, the tax assessor is just an internal floor area, but in some cases, it may not be.
Just out of curiosity, I know when I've looked at my house plans, it's got an automatic calculation from the CAD system. Do you know if that's a square footage or exterior? Is there a standard? I guess it's my question.
I think that's what I was saying, it's, you'd probably have to call the assessor and ask them if they had additional language on your specific record, if it wasn't documented on it. So, let me ask you, Mayor, does that account for the square footage you would want if you had lost your home on your assessor record?
I've got three different numbers for my house. I have no idea what the square footage of my house is.
Okay.
Yeah, 'cause I don't know if it counts the garage, I don't know if it...
Sometimes it doesn't, sometimes it doesn't, sometimes they do, we've seen ones when they do count the garage, but a lot of times, it doesn't. So, when you, when you look at the assessor record information online, typically, that does not count your garage.
So, I guess I'm coming back to a question, just what is square footage? I know you say it's the interior, but where would we, where would we obtain that information?
Square footage is actually the exterior, the way the city of Malibu applies it, 'cause of total development square footage in the definition for that.
I just wanna be sure I understand this, this deals with the LCP, too. It's the lesser of these various things that are set forth, right? By virtue of using the word "or"?
Yes, but it is, the way it's applied is... Yes, but it is, the way it's applied is all, almost.
Well, if you're in excess of 10% of the bulk, wouldn't that mean, if an increase to the square footage ends up in more than a 10% increase to the bulk, wouldn't that mean you can't do it?
We don't get into that much detail, just telling you about what practices...
Why not? That's what the statute says.
Well, because the way it, because then, to the architect's point, if you apply it directly that way, bulk would be, would be very limiting in that case. So the way it's been applied is you have a balloon, and that balloon just gets 10% bigger. That accounts for square footage, height, and bulk.
See, now, I would think that when applied literally, it does, it is limiting, and I would have thought that's why it was written the way it was written, and that people shouldn't be disregarding the fact that it has that effect, just because they don't like that effect. You have to change the statute if you don't like that effect. You don't disregard the plain language.
I think the intent that everyone is used to expecting is that you get 10% additional square footage. So that's kind of the framework for a rebuild plus 10%. So to your point, if you applied it to the very, very literal, you might be limited by, because of some bulk or height language, or this might say, you can only get the square footage, but you can't get the height. You only get one of the two, right? I'm just being, I'm just letting you know how it's applied, is that balloon that I mentioned. You have your balloon, your balloon gets 10% bigger. That's essentially what it is, because I believe all of us up here, for the most part, view rebuild plus 10% or 110% as 100 plus 10% of square footage that you had before.
Well, go to that example where the, you had a pitched roof, or a small structure as an additional floor, and you want to now capture that height for a flat roof. To me, that's not what this was intended to let you have, and yet, if you're saying that it's any of them, that's what you end up getting. Am I wrong about that?
I'll explain. I think it's good to pull up that. Let me try to find that. I don't know where Parker went again, but...
But to go along with what you're saying, I'm thinking, you have a two-story house, and it's 1,000 square feet on each floor, that's 2,000 square feet. And if you raise the height 10%, you don't really get 10% more square footage, because it's, you're only...
No, but I thought that we were told, your height is to this invisible entire floor, even though the floor didn't exist before. So if you want now the whole floor to be covered, that's, you can do that within, you can say, I want to move, I want to add 10% to my height. And that means you now can fill in the entire floor and plus raise it 10%, because that was the height of the building. But that's giving you like 30, 40% more space, more square footage.
That's if you eliminate bulk. So I'll show you how we apply it with the bulk.
And I may misunderstand it, but that's what I thought we learned yesterday or the day before.
Let's raise the word "bulk", isn't it?
Okay, so with the, with the accounting of, oops, I can't modify this whole one. With the accounting of bulk, the situations that you get is kind of like this, that's typically when bulk is applied, how your structure is now going to look. And if bulk is not applied, then you're just relying on height and footprint, and that's when you get this situation here.
So again, so it's whatever the smaller of these allows you to do, because if you didn't apply bulk, if you just took height, you'd be able to get away with the bigger thing. That was why I was thinking this means the lesser of those.
No, it's integrating all three. That's what I mean. So if you eliminate one, you do get that extra height. If you integrate all three, now bulk becomes part of the equation, and it actually shifts your building to be like that.
All right, I mean, I profess to be thoroughly confused.
But don't we measure the height from the top of the roof?
We do, yes. But the massing portion, so, yes. So in this case, you could do something like this, and then this would have to, I don't know if it's going to let me do it, but we might let you do something like this, right? It gets smaller because of the bulk issue. And then you would need a site plan review for the additional portions of your building above 18 feet.
Right.
So then, yeah.
But if you have a 12-foot, let's go 14, 14-foot pitched roof, and you wanted to change it to a 14-foot flat roof, are you saying you wouldn't get that as a 10% rebuild? Mike?
Your mic's off.
Every roof is different, right? In a perfect situation, you might not, but it's, every, there's, every, every home in Malibu is a custom home, and so the equation gets a little different each time. It's not a perfect science. But essentially, yes, you do get the additional height. You have to account for the 3D volume as well, and that's, and if your height or your bulk puts you, are putting areas into areas where they weren't before, and those areas are above 18 feet in height, then you would then need a site plan review for all of that.
Well, we kind of colloquially talked about this yesterday, it's essentially, it's cubic feet. You're going to get up to 10% additional cubic feet. Is that really what we're talking, what happens?
Potentially. We don't do it that way, but yes.
Why don't we? I mean, why don't we just, here's a chance to fix it. Why don't we just use that term, and then everyone will understand what it means, and you get up to that or less?
The outside of the footprint is your constraint too. Because I got a, somebody sent me a package, it said, let's take a two-story house and make it a one-story, and it just spreads out. And they wanted that for approval. So I, if I could say this a little differently for...
But so long as, so long as it's no more than 10% additional cubic feet.
Yeah, but you could spread it out and make it bigger.
No, I'm saying, in addition to these things, that you get up to 10% of one of these, so long as it doesn't take you over 10% additional cubic feet. Isn't that really the concept that we're trying to impose?
I think that's the final test.
It's a more complicated issue, because cubic feet is just mass. Bulk describes the visual obstruction, or a, could be applied to an irregularity about a few corridor. Bulk talks about disproportion, a symmetry issue. It can, it's much broader in terms of impact to the neighbor. Cubic feet just says, get this to get somewhere. So it's limiting. It's actually, it doesn't have the nuance that bulk does.
But I think to go back to what I was about to say, you can increase the square footage 10%. You can raise the heights by whatever percentage you want, so forth, but at the end of the day, the bulk is the final test. So you can go left, you can go up, out, but at the end of the day, it's the volume.
Correct. It's just that extra layer of protection, so the height and footprint doesn't get too out of whack.
I would also add one other thing, which is where the 10% originates from. And that primarily was driven years ago, and looking at disasters, at the progression of the building code again. So, for example, the rise and run of the stair used to be much steeper 30 years ago. Now it's much flatter, because we've learned that that's a safety issue. Well, when you get a flatter stair, it takes up more space. So your 10% spatially, sometimes a lot of it goes to compensate for new code requirements within the original home. So it's not, maybe in a one-story home, you're getting a freebie, but the older the home, the more your 10% is being used to compensate for code requirements that you used to enjoy and cannot enjoy anymore.
Like in the case of a roof where you used to have mechanical equipment on the outside, now you want your venting and everything to be taken care of underneath the actual roof height, so that that height can compensate to allow for that enclosure of all those crap.
Systems. Water heater in the garage, that used to be typical. So components like that are no longer part of your modern codes.
And that makes a lot of sense to me, and I think it's unfortunate that it has morphed into you just get a gift of 10%, and I do use the word gift, of 10%, because it really should say, any additional space needed to compensate for code upgrades, so long as you don't go in excess of 10%. It shouldn't just be a, you get 10% to play with however you choose. It should be, build the same thing, and if you're required by code to do something a little larger somewhere, okay, as long as it doesn't exceed 10%. But we're not doing that, right? We're just giving people a full 10%, however they want it, wherever they want it.
That's up to the design team.
That's how, to be fair, though, that's how it is, has always been interpreted, always, is because you lost your home, you know, giving you that extra 10%. And that's why I always trigger back to the square footage, because that's what we think of. We think of you have 1,000 square feet, now you have 1,100 square feet in this, in the outcome.
I have one proposed change to this, I don't know if you all have an appetite for this, because I wanted to do this in the LCP, and we can't do it there. But in the red language in C, the second beginning change, structures that were damaged or destroyed by a natural disaster, I'd like to say, at least in our municipal code, by a cause outside the control of the property owner. I don't know why we're limiting our municipal code to natural disaster. Again, there's a, there's a big question of what does it mean for a disaster to be natural versus man-made, but I don't know why anyone whose home is destroyed, their non-conforming home is destroyed by, for things outside their control, should not get the same benefit of those who get it for a disaster.
Let me tell you the concern I'd have about that. Let's say that you had a woodpile stacked next to your house. That may have ignited, and it caused the house to burn down in a wildland fire. If you say it was beyond their control, that's something that they could have controlled. It could be a, it could be a fault.
No, in your example, the wildland fire controlled, burned their house.
Are you saying, sorry, if, let's just, so it's beyond our control if I fall asleep with a candle on, or a cigarette in my mouth, or something idiotic?
This is actually a concept that's in insurance law. You don't get insurance when you cause your damage, but you do if someone else... You know, a homeless person sets your house on fire, or your neighbor's car explodes, I mean, all these things, I don't know why you don't...
Or your neighbor's car explodes.
Or your neighbor's, even your own, I don't understand why we don't get the benefit of being able to put your house back, just because, you only get it if it's a natural disaster, and you don't get it whenever the house burns down. I mean, obviously, if someone torches their house so they can build it back, they don't get that benefit, just like you don't get insurance when you commit suicide. But you should get the benefit of being able to rebuild your house whenever you didn't intentionally destroy it.
Yeah, but it's a question of contributory negligence. I don't mean to sound like a practice in law, but if you contributed to your downfall...
This is one of those things where the perfect is the enemy of the good. The good is, nine times out of 10, maybe 99 times out of 100, when someone's house burns down, it's not because they did it. It's because it got burned down. And it's going to also, nine times out of 10, be not during a wildfire. It's going to be because the kitchen, there was a grease fire, there was an explosion outside, there was arson, there's all kinds of reasons houses burn. And I don't understand why all those people don't get the same benefit that we're giving someone who loses their house in a natural disaster.
I'm just going to tie natural disaster back to the exemption in the LCP, and so that's why it's there, so I'm not comfortable with changing it.
I think it's because it's a nat, like, we're dealing with this, just because it's a natural disaster. I think that would mean that we would have to rewrite our code, like, permanently, meaning outside of this?
It's tied to the exemption, as Mayor Proton mentioned. It's supposed to reflect exactly that.
And that's what the governor has said. These are the governor's words, this is the coastal commission's words, these are all approved already by higher people than us, right?
Well, this specific language is in the MMC, but yes, it is referencing a state law. Excuse me.
So if we go back to coastal, and we say, we want to change your word to this, I don't, I just...
Just because this is our word.
Okay, so we're gonna...
This is in our code, but we mimic the state law in this case, because it is referencing the same exemption language. So the way it works, without the governor's order, you get that exemption if your structure was destroyed in a natural disaster. You thus get this privilege to build with a planning verification for that same event.
Doesn't it have to be declared a natural disaster for this to kick in? It's not like, I guess what you're saying is the MMC, you're trying to make it for Malibu specific.
Yeah, well, actually, I don't, I don't think a natural disaster is defined as one which is declared a natural disaster. It either is or it isn't. But, look, and obviously, there's no appetite on council to make the change I'm proposing, so I'll, you know, I think we should make it, but if there's no appetite for it...
I just don't know enough right now, and I don't think it's necessary.
I agree with Haylen. Let's, do we have any changes to C? If not, let's see if we can get approval.
Acceptable.
Yeah, and I added the non-beach front, because that's what that means, 18 feet. We've, I think we've beat that one to death at this point, right?
Yeah.
We're burying it.
And so what I did add was a C1, and let me, let me explain what that is.
Where's C1?
Yeah, C1 was originally kicked, but we're adding one back in because of the FEMA issue, to make sure it's captured in the MMC. So that would give people with the FEMA issue, the ability to get a planning verification, even if non-conforming. So let me, let me get to that. And here it is, here, so. So this would be added as 1760020C1, so that paragraph we just approved, which gives you a planning verification. We now have this carved out for C1, which is that, and this is tied to the height lateral versus vertical thing that I mentioned at the workshop. So, replacement structures on beachfront lots are allowed to meet the minimum increases necessary to meet the Federal Emergency Management Agency requirements, but shall to the maximum extent feasible protect neighboring blue water views. Replacement structures shall seek increases in square footage laterally before they are allowed to increase vertically, as viewed by neighboring properties. And then I copied the language we had before, but I might have to go back and change it based on what you agreed to for the LCP de minimis waiver. Does that make sense?
I think you do want to put the language from the LCP in here.
Right, at the very end. So I'll just change that with that. I'll come back to that, but we'll keep going. What about everything else about...
I think we have, we'd have an acceptance of C, and...
Can I maybe just add one more thing, because Mr. Dietrich did make a good point the other day, when he said, I did say just blue water views, I wrote this up, you know, very quickly. Do you want to just say ocean views?
Yeah, that's probably a better, better word.
So it's not, you know, if you have whitewater views, for example, it's not saying that's not allowed to be protected?
Ocean views. Okay, so on seven, on one, we're going to come, you're going to change that to the language from the LCP.
Yes, and I'll come back to that so we can keep going, and then I'll make a note to do that.
All right. So that takes us to the end of this page. Let's now go to the next page. And there's not really anything in there, because you took out F and put it back in C, correct?
Correct.
All right. Let's move on to development permits. So you got, A is first place.
Yes, so as I mentioned before, we created this new thing called the rebuild development permit. That's going to come here to you soon. So before, everything would need an administrative plan review, so that's why we're just adding this caveat language to the beginning of administrative plan review, that administrative plan review shall be required for the following development projects, unless it is allowed under a rebuild development permit.
Anybody have an objection to that? No objection? Let's move on.
This is just...
You're now at 14. Go ahead.
1762040 is a site plan review. This is just some cleanup language, because the old language used coastal morphologists back in the 90s probably, when it was drafted.
What is a morphologist? Never mind. All right.
Yeah, we just brought that up to modern terminology, and then without the rebuild development permit, a new seawall would require a site plan review, which has noticing, and we're just adding some language that you can now get one for a rebuild in a rebuild development permit.
That's number 10, correct?
10.
All right. No problem with that? Anybody have an objection?
No.
All right, moving on to 13.
So in a site plan review, because now you're getting a de minimis waiver for a relocation structure in a geo-hazard area, but you might have new portions of your home, replacement home, above 18 feet in parts that your neighbor had never seen before, this is requiring a site plan review if it has development over 18 feet into that relocation structure. So that's a big thing. I just wanted to know if you guys are comfortable with... with that, because protecting views.
Protecting the neighbor.
Yeah.
So the only question I had with this is if your neighbor's house burned down also, how is the notification gonna be done?
It's a good question. I mean, right now, we get the tax assessor records or the tax information, so it has their house, the house, geographically their house, and then they're on file with the, like, assessor's office, what, what their mailing address might be. But sometimes it's the same, and if that hasn't changed based on their relocation because of the fire, that is a real issue, potential issue.
Did we encounter this where people weren't notified in Woolsey, and?
That's also hard to verify, because we sent out a notice, and, and if we don't hear back, or we don't get that card back that says it wasn't received, we don't actually know for sure if someone received it.
I mean, that's kind of my, my biggest concern is just, how do we make sure that, that no neighbors know this, or they've moved out of the neighborhood because of the amount of reconstructions that's gonna be going on, they've chosen to relocate.
You would think they have forwarding their email, forwarded mail, but that only goes for a year.
We also have people in Woolsey, you know, there's that quote 20 to 30% that have never done anything. We don't know where they went. We don't know if they're even getting any of the information, so.
We actually had this happen the other day. We had an individual managing an estate person have left their home, was now living off-site, and the property owner, we had to track down to try to figure out how to get him notice of a project in his neighborhood. So we were lucky in that case that we had an alternate address that hadn't been changed with the assessor's office. So it can be very time-consuming.
I hate to say this, but, you know, as a legal matter, they're on constructive notice that they're entitled to certain notifications if certain things happen, and if they don't make their address available to the city, they've kind of waived the ability to get it.
Well, and I was gonna say that we're still requiring posting on the site of some type of a development, if there's a site plan review included.
Site plan review, because it would be a de minimis waiver, yes, it would get that noticing sign. If it was just an administrative plan review, there's no requirement for an onsite noticing sign. It's just a requirement for mailing to the address.
That's just for an APR, for a site plan review, anything over 18 feet is gonna trigger the onsite.
The mailing, the mailing.
But not a requirement to be posted at the site?
I don't think there is a posted for just a site plan review. So an APR with an SPR, there's no posting, there's just a mailing. For a coastal development permit, that's why a posting is required, yeah.
Just out of curiosity, when do we put story polls up on these? When is that?
That's for this type of situation, a development over, new development over 18 feet.
So they'd have to put the story polls up, as well as have the sign?
If you have a site plan review, we make you put story polls up so that your neighbors can assess visual impacts.
They just get a mailing.
Yeah, but I'm just saying, you would know physically that there would be something going on, because now you have all these story polls.
Yeah, they're better than a sign.
Everybody sees the story polls. All right. Anybody have any changes to 13? Are we comfortable with that? If no changes, let's keep moving on. C1.
Yeah, so because we're adding that new, you know, for if you get a DMW with an SPR for your replacement, substantially outside the footprint, or whatever terminology we use, getting tripped up here now. But because it's tied to primary view determinations, which protect 1,000 feet, we're requiring 1,000-foot notices for that type of situation.
Any, any comments on this?
We're deliberately not saying in substantially the same location here?
Say same location, right.
Is that a deliberate choice, or is that just we didn't throw it in?
It, it doesn't mimic the language you, that we created from the last one, if that's what you're saying, because we cleaned it up yesterday in a different section, but it's not added here, because this is what, what the text was before we cleaned it up.
No, this is, this is, it's not there, period. So this is, it's gonna, if it's not gonna be in exactly the same location, this is gonna apply, and I'm asking whether it ought to not apply so long as it's in substantially the same location. I can see arguments for both. I'm just, I'm gonna make sure this wasn't oversight as opposed to deliberate.
I can clean it up so that, like, the language looks the same in each little caveat, just to be very clear. I think this is really the catch, is 13, so not cited in the same general location. Yeah, I think we do have to turn, put the word substantially in here to mimic the other ones, to, to that it's a match. I think that's a good, a good add.
So the word substantially, the word substantially.
Substantially would go between in and the before same. Mm-hmm. So we'd add substantially to this, and we can add substantially to this, to just make it consistent.
What is the second this?
Yeah, what's, right. C1.
We got C1, right?
Or it's the first place.
Yeah, if that's the second place. So you're saying in 13?
Yeah, so A13 here, and then in C1. We'll insert the terms substantially.
Can you type it in, Tyler, so they can see where you're gonna change?
Sure. Do you want me to do this now, or do we want to do this at the end and keep going? What was the preference?
I'll just do it now, just putting substantially in, right?
I don't believe that's an editable document.
That's, that's the problem. I gotta copy paste this into a PowerPoint, and then I gotta.
And just, just keep track of it, Tim.
You got it.
Okay, all right. Okay, moving on to the next page. There's no changes on that page. Moving on to 17.62.080 rebuild development permit.
All right, so a rebuild development permit was now is a very brand-new entitlement in the Malibu municipal code. We had, we have administrative plan reviews, and we have site plan reviews, we have planning verifications and all those things. Now we have a rebuild development permit, and a lot of this just mimics the de minimis waiver language. So if you recall, for non-Palisades fire, you need a planning verification with a bunch of DMWs. For Palisades fire, you'll get a planning verification with a bunch of rebuild development permits, because you're only subject to the MMC, and this is the catch for that. Your mechanized equipment on the beach is allowed as a rebuild development permit, and this primary development pad will be inserted. Any OWTS, any OWTS replacement is allowed as a rebuild development permit. New seawalls are allowed. If you recall, the DMW only allowed replacement seawalls because of the coastal commission's staff's kind of allowance, but new seawalls will be allowed as an RDP for Palisades fire, to protect an OWTS. We actually have some new language for four, and based on our conversations, to make it specific that water tanks and other water storage devices were explicitly included, so it's more clear.
Didn't we want to put in there, or recommended?
Yes, that is necessary or recommended. I could put that.
Yes.
So that will replace that four there, and then five is minor improvements to driveway. So this is your driveway widening. The difference here, we don't have coastal trying to limit us more, so we have the flexibility to do more, and that is, the retaining walls can be six or 12 feet, but that matches our property design standards, where you can have two six-foot walls staggered. So you have a six-foot wall, three-foot run, and another six-foot wall, no taller than 12 feet, is the cap. If you were doing new development under the MMC, we just mimic that here, if you need to use that for your driveway. And you can develop on slopes deeper than three to one under this development permit. Anything, all good with that?
I'm not hearing any objections. All right, here at B.
So B just gets into kind of the processing of the rebuild development permit. So those are all the actions that the planning director can take, can approve under a rebuild development permit. Now we're under the processing of a rebuild development permit. So we have the application submittal, it should be filed with the planning division, and may be part of the planning verification application that were damaged or destroyed. So it could be individually applied for, it could be applied for as part of the planning verification. Application shall be deemed complete only after all the information is submitted and reviewed by appropriate city staff specialists. I think this was confusing to a resident the other day. It's not saying all of these specialists are going to review your RDP. It just gives the city the ability, in case we need to, have a specialist review your project in a, in the planning phase. It just gives us that ability. It's not, it's not guaranteeing that every single department is gonna review every single RDP application.
Can I ask a global question about this? From your presentation the other night, what I, and I think you said this during the workshop too, what I understand is that the reason for all of these new provisions is because a PV doesn't capture other structures. It only, it only captures the main, the building.
It just captures replacement structures, yeah.
And, and is there any more hoops that are gonna need to be gone through for these various things than would be gone through for a PV if PV applied to each of these things?
No, it's roughly, it's basically the same thing.
Couldn't we just have an omnibus provision in the definition of PV that said, in the case of a property destroyed, whatever, all these following, all these other things are included in the PV, and not have to draft this whole new?
Well, the thing is that for that non-conforming usage in structures, it's limited to 10%. So that doesn't work for things like an OWTS. There's no 10% on an OWTS, because you go from a 1,500-gallon capacity to a 3,200 capacity, because that's just the standard size. So that, you know, you would be limiting if you put everything under a planning verification.
Okay, so I, I, I have concerns, since our goal is to make it as painless as possible for the homeowner to rebuild like-for-like with all these things, and I just have concerns that we're somehow creating additional hoops here, that wouldn't exist if they just had to do a PV for everything. But maybe I misunderstand it.
No, it just, it depends on how you do your design. So if you want to have an all-encompassing design, then you would come in with, you know, all your engineering done up front, and you would just submit the packages that way. The way most of our public works is they don't do it that way. They, they want to get their architectural design first, and then kind of plug in the pieces as, as they go. They, they don't always, if you, if you did it the other way, you would be requiring them to have the full package up front prior to getting approval from the city, which isn't the wrong thing to do, but it would be a complete process change. Okay, thank you.
So we're okay with B? And then to C? Only question I have on C is, you've got 15 days.
Yeah, can you hit the 15 days?
Yeah.
So the key term is application, date of the complete application. So you may submit an application, but it's not, you're not materially complete. You may be missing a few items. And I even have the caveat, the city may include incomplete or non-conforming plans as a basis for incomplete applications, meaning if your plans are not satisfactory, that is a remaining incomplete item. So it's 15 days from the date your application is complete, meaning also your plans have met satisfactory requirements.
Let me ask you, when these plans come in, how many times are they not complete?
Depends who's designing them. But, you know, one thing I forgot to mention, yeah, 99, thank you, Mayor Proton, we always issue an incomplete letter, guaranteed, unless you're putting in like a fence and you know what you're doing, right? We issued our second planning verification today, by the way.
Very good.
Yeah, so that, that homeowner was an architect, he was well-known in the city, had his plans, bing bang boom, right?
It was his house?
It was, yeah, that's, yeah. I'm not saying names, but he has.
That's okay, I'm just, okay.
It was his house, yes.
So we know it can be done?
The two, I'll just tell you, the two planning verification approvals are known architects in the city.
So it can be done if they want to. Okay, gotcha. Okay, that's, that's answering my question.
All right, any other comments on C? If not, we'll move on to D.
And this is just consistent with a lot of our other permits, you have three-year expiration, and it could be extended by the planning director. Oh, that's, that's the next one, I'm sorry, that's extension. So expiration is just three years from the date of approval.
Going on to the extension as part of this, do we charge a fee for the extension?
We do, yeah.
Do you have to go in front of planning commission for the extension?
No, this one can be approved by the.
Just the planning director?
Mm-hmm.
Uh-oh.
Oh, we're at the end of the page.
Is it over?
There's a couple, there's a couple cleanups. I don't know if we want, I don't know.
Do we want to take a break, and let you do the cleanup, and then say, come back really at 8:45? And then I'll give you a chance to clean up and get you a break.
What about, what about, I don't know.
I think it's only small that we have this, substantially, right?
It's, it's small, but I would probably have no break.
Yeah.
That's fine. Let's just do 8:45.
8:45. And please don't, don't I discuss with the council members, as the public hearing has been closed.
The county never.
I know.
We want, we want to be, we want to be, you know, 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 we want to
I, we identified a number of things that we still need to do, among other things, the policy issues. There are a lot of ancillary questions that we're gonna need to be addressing sooner than later. But I really do think that workshop was a great opportunity to learn from the residents and from the local professionals, and informed our decisions. And I'm hoping that rather, I'm hoping that the process going forward for all these important decisions that affect so many people will be, let's start with the workshop before we even have a document framed. Let's find out from everyone what they're looking for. Let's discuss it. Again, three minutes up at the podium doesn't really cut it, especially since it's not interactive. So, let's do more of that. Let's do it as often as we need to, to get out of this emergency. Because we're all in this together. We're gonna be in it together for a while, and let's get it right from the beginning.
I wanted to add, I was wondering if the audience and the public have three minutes, that maybe we should adopt that as well. I mean, I'm definitely open to that. Maybe we talk about it on Monday.
Yeah, it's just tough to cover our council comments when you talk about what you're supposed to have done in the past and anything you need to bring forward.
Or we move that, like the kissing the babies and the ribbon cutting, to the end of the meeting so we don't hold the public hostage.
We've already adjusted our meeting, so we're still kind of working through that.
Gotcha.
Yeah, we changed everything around for that.
And Mayor, just as the council references this, we are bringing back an item on Monday to discuss a supplemental meeting schedule and also the format of the agenda. So, if there are other items you want to discuss, that would be the appropriate time.
So, you could discuss that if you wanted at that item.
Mary Ann?
I just want to compliment staff. I mean, we're sitting here, it's March 6th. It's literally two months on the calendar from, you know, if you just count date to date. What they have done through these last essentially eight weeks has been remarkable for the size of the staff, the amount of things that they've been requested to do. They have literally cut the lights on and despite moving around to various cities and counties throughout our region, have had countless meetings with countless stakeholders and other government officials to craft these things. And it's just, it's remarkable. And I think what our little city of Malibu has accomplished, I think we're way ahead despite what things might say for LA City or even the county, what they've been able to do. So, compliments. Thank you. You are great professionals, and I'm so happy that you're here with us and not someplace else.
I'll close up with a couple of things. First off, we couldn't have done it without you. And it's not just the planning staff and building and safety. The city clerk's staff has been awesome. I'm surprised you aren't gonna just take out knives and kill us as we kept going on, but you hung in there with us. I also want to say, I think, appreciate the city councils working together on this. This has been a challenge to move this quickly. And to Halen's point, absolutely right. You know, not only from the fire of January 7th, we were out of this building for almost three weeks. And, you know, you were doing this remotely. As you said, the governor kept changing things, but we also need to thank the legislators and the lobbyists that we used on this, who were constantly trying to craft what we figured out next. And to Tyler and Trevor, the August, probably the February 13th governor's order has your fingerprints all over it. And it was the culmination of a lot of efforts. People opened the door for that conversation, and you took it. Excellent job. And when you look at the clock since then, the 13th, the 20th, it was the planning commission. The 4th, it was with us, and now it's gonna be the 10th. We'll finish it up. This is within the statutory requirements. We have not missed a beat to get this through. And thanks to everybody for making that happen. I hope the citizens and residents of our city understand what we've changed here for them, and the results will be the benchmark. And I think we've got this set up for really good results. So, thank you all very much.
Get your applications in. Rebuild Center's supposed to open March 10th.
And your ROEs in. Get your ROEs in. And with that, the meeting's officially adjourned. We're out.